Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Acton School Committee Meeting, Thursday, November 10th, 2022. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
Uh, maybe, should I move this? Should we move the celebration of learning down one line? Buy us a few minutes? Yes, I'd like to start, if we could, with, um, uh, we'll move three and four, please.
Okay, we'll switch those around. All right. And any comments from the public?
The question in the grade score that came out, the national scores that came out, and how, uh, I guess, from the taxpayer's point of view, with the amount of money that the school receives, why the proficiency of the students is so low in the department. Although I will congratulate New Hampshire and Maine, basically New England, because they were the highest on the low scores. But still, you know, just looking at it from that perspective.
Well, we're gonna hear, I believe, from Patty at 7.1. At least for the NWEAs.
I think you referring to the NAEP, the National Assessment?
Correct.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you what I know as the pandemic was part of the, the impact on that assessment over time for kids. And, you know, part of that is the whole returning to school plan that we have in place, just like every school in the country.
I expected that answer, but also if you look at the date from that data, that started back in 2017.
Yeah, and it hasn't always been right. So, we've been, we've actually been, and it's interesting, they say that the NAEP is a random assessment of schools, and we've been picked two times over the last three years to actually administer it. And I wouldn't be surprised, we're gonna administer it again this year. But what we can do is we can wait and see what Patty has to say about our local data. And then, of course, you can have an opportunity to ask questions about that local data that we're looking at for our Acton kids, not as an aggregate of the state of Maine. That's right. All right, good.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the public? Then I'll turn it over to you for number four.
Sure, so we're gonna go to four with new teacher introductions. And I just wanna frame this up as normally this is a September event for us. But because we didn't have a September meeting, because we were so late in August with our meeting, we chose not to meet in September, that we did not introduce at the time Sadie Thomas and Jenica Goslin. So Sadie is our new music teacher, who happened to be at the right place at the right time and put in an application when, boy, did we need a music teacher. And she, this is her first full-time teaching gig. And I'll let her talk a little bit about that when the opportunity arises with your questions. And Jenica Goslin has a couple of years' experience under her belt in a couple of different school systems. And that was the position that we created when we looked at the size of, if you remember, we looked at the size of our kindergarten class in July. And we decided to cut that in half. And we had the funds to do a second class. She has the second-class of kindergarteners. So they agreed to come for just a quick introduction tonight, because we didn't have an opportunity to do it in September.
Okay.
Okay, so I present these two to you, if you have any questions of them.
Well, it's nice to welcome you to our staff. And how is it going? I guess I'll, one by one, how is it going?
Uh, well, thank you so much for having us here tonight. It's really appreciated. It's been going well. It's been an adjustment for me, going back to my small-town roots and stuff. But it's honestly brought me back to a great community in a sense of that big-community feeling I really love and enjoy. Recently with the kiddos, I pre-K through third grade have been starting on stuff for their holiday concert. I've been really trying to focus their holiday concert material on a general theme of peace, joy, love, and friendship, to kind of have that universal theme all around. And so they have been working on items for that. My fourth and fifth graders actually just today finished up their bucket drumming unit, which they have been in love with. And then my sixth through eighth graders just finished up their unit on composition about a week or two ago. And we have introduced ukuleles. And they have been asking to play the lava song. And they have just really gotten into it. I've had them play out assemblies so far. And you've seen the student participation come out. And I'm having a really good time with it.
Excellent. Anybody else?
All right, so you do the pre-K too, yeah?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so what do you think about pre-K through eighth? That, you know, coming right out of college and dealing with all these ages.
Yeah, it's a challenge. And I have to say, I did my student teaching with grades four through eighth. So, and working with the younger-aged groups, especially pre-K, definitely challenged me a lot more beginning. It's 10 grade ranges, it's gonna be challenging for anyone. But I've noticed where our schedule is set up. It's small doses every week, like I get an hour with each group. So it really allows me to do a lesson and take time to sit back and reevaluate what went well, what didn't, and really fix my mindset for next class and make that better and better. So it's a great learning opportunity for me. And I'm actually having a lot more fun with the younger grades than I initially thought I would have.
Excellent.
Yes, so what instruments do you play?
My primary instrument is clarinet. My secondary is saxophone. However, through college for music education, USM prepares you to teach K-12 vocal, general, and instrumental music. So to a varying degree, I can play a large range of instruments from trumpet, trombone, oboe, bassoon, piano. It's all there to some varying degree. But what's really important is USM provided me with the knowledge to figure it out, rather than you have to know this, and this, and this. They gave me the tools to figure it out, and it's really helpful.
Very good.
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, and how are things going in kindergarten?
They're going great. I have a great group. I have CJ's son, and it's wonderful. I'm really enjoying them. And I love being an Acton. It's such a wonderful, small school that I really am enjoying.
Excellent. Yeah, it's, it's kinda nice to have that small-staff community with people that have been here for a long time, too, to help the ones that have been coming in and move. Anybody else? God bless you.
I guess I hadn't taught kindergarten before, but I love it. I'm really, really enjoying it now, so.
So where were you before?
I was in Brown Eagle in State Falls for a year during third. And before that, I did fifth. So I haven't done as young as kids before. But I, like I said, I'm really enjoying it. Every day they're learning something totally new, and yeah.
It's amazing what they can learn at that age, it really is.
They're like a sponge.
And personally, I hear wonderful things about both of you at home, so, thank you.
Yeah, so splitting that K-class was a good move. When I think of all of them in one place, it's probably, wouldn't be as effective.
Yeah.
I was in Jenica's room this week, and we went over characters in the Bad Seed book. And they were very engaged. And then I had the opportunity to substitute in pre-K yesterday, I think it was, because we didn't have a sub, so I did pre-K as the ed tech. And I went to music with, with pre-K, and we had Toasty Toast the Fly in there. Somebody, Toasty.
Toasty the Toast.
Toasty the Toast Fly.
A lot of music teachers from around the country post resources on YouTube for us to use. And one of them I was doing is called a voice exploration, where they follow a pattern, and they can see how high their voice can go, and how high they, and low they can go. And it's just a really great exploration of voice. The story engages them, and they love Toasty the Toast Fly. I never thought I would say that.
Well, I taught music for quite a few years, and I did K through 12. And I have, I understand that, how you have to switch gears from one room to the next. You have to really, really challenge you. But it's great to have you onboard. It sounds like everything is going well.
So thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah, you two don't have to.
Really appreciate it.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to. If you want to, you can, right?
They can if they want, but they have to be here tomorrow morning to teach. So I recommend going out in five weeks.
They don't have to be here tomorrow.
We have tomorrow off. I don't know if that's a really, I don't know if that's a really good reason to stay. They have tomorrow off, but you decide. I planned on packing my lunch and pedal on in, patching the heads on.
All right, go ahead.
It's the phone.
It is, it's the phone, he's lost.
Yeah, I know, that's what it is.
Okay, are we ready for number three now?
You guys are all set. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
We are good, okay. I'll get out of the way. You using your phone to get on there? Yes. Are we gonna be able to hear them? I don't know if she can hear us, but I'm not sure Ms. Scully knows about this.
Oh, there she is.
Is that her?
Yeah, she's a little bite a little bit.
She's kinda like.
Hiding in the dark.
There she is, she has us. I don't know if she can hear us.
Can you hear us?
Hey, Tracy, can you hear us?
She's sleeping.
Hello?
Hello.
Tracy, can you hear us? Yes.
Okay.
I can, a little glitchy, but.
Where is she?
All right, Tracy, so we've been kind of planning something for you for a while, and we were hoping to have you here in person. But this will do for now. And we also, at, at some point in the near future, we're going to do this at a Friday assembly, so the students can also recognize you and appreciate what you've done for the past 11 years for Acton School. So tonight, it's my honor in recognizing someone who has gone above and beyond for our student athletes for a long time. Tracy has served as our athletic director for, like I said, 11 years. Tracy has done an amazing job, to say the least. From my perspective, her ability of plan and communicate has been nothing less than outstanding. There is so much work that goes into planning games, tournaments, practices, and game schedules. So much of it goes unnoticed. My work with Tracy has given us an opportunity to showcase our fields and facilities for each home game. Tracy's main goal is always to give the students the opportunity to thrive in sports. She has worked consistently, sometimes making the impossible look easy. Tracy is a leader, and I am one person among many that would be proud to follow and have been, and found myself a better person in the process. So I would say simply tonight, thank you for all the athletes and the families that you have motivated, inspired, guided, and encouraged. And thank you for always being on your game, ensuring the fields and buildings were always prepped for all events. I'm pleased to present you with this plaque that will be displayed in our lobby, and it reads as follows. At the top, it is obviously from the Acton Wildcats. It is in recognition for 11 years of service as Athletic Director. The Acton School community thanks Tracy Scully. True dedication in sharing her passion for sports and wellness with all Acton students.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't even know what to say. I'm like, a little teary-eyed. It was a tough decision to stop being the Athletic Director after 11 years. But I was happy that I was able to be the coach for the soccer team, for sure. It was a tough season, we didn't win a game, but the boys never gave up. They showed great sportsmanship in every game. And it was just an absolute joy to be out there on the field with them and not have to worry about all the behind-the-scenes stuff, too. But I really appreciate the recognition, and I hope I can continue to coach as well. And I thank all of you, too. And Andy, I couldn't have done it without you, obviously. I mean, you're the mastermind behind keeping the fields, you know, ready and the court ready for me as well, so.
Yeah, it's been a great.
I appreciate it.
It's been a great team effort. And one of the things that I noticed and picked up on was through the whole pandemic, you know, the whole world came to a screeching halt. And one of the things that really took kind of a backseat was.
I lost that.
Was Athletics for Kids. So coming, returning the kids to, back to sports after the pandemic is something that you really, I mean, you really worked really hard at getting things back as quickly as possible. And it's, it's really, it's, I, I feel honored to be a part of recognizing you for what you've done. So thank you, I'm sure.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, all of you. I wish I could be there.
So Tracy, I'm over here, but nobody has a problem hearing me. You're my fifth Athletic Director I've worked with.
I keep glitching out a little bit.
I'm the, I'm your fifth, you're my fifth Athletic Director as an administrator in public education. And I tell you, Tracy, working with you was top-notch. I mean, you always made sure everything was taken care of. And if there were ever issues, that you thought you needed me to help you with, you would come to me. And we never, in sports, had one thing that we disagreed on because you were making great decisions. So I thank you for my first six years here as being the Athletic Director. It went so well working with you.
Thank you so much. I loved every second of it.
Okay, Tracy, one last one. This is Christie. And obviously, I'm so excited to be working under you and having you as my mentor. You are constantly checking in with me and saying, oh, yeah, I forgot this little thing. And I know I can count on you as a coach. I have big shoes to fill, but I know that you are going to support me through this and make sure that I do a good job for our athletes. So thank you for setting the tone, and I hope that I can keep rolling with this awesome athletic department. We have a little else, a little something for you. Jenny, will you just call my phone up? And it's.
Oh, my God.
You got your name on the side, so we'll have that for you in your office, okay?
That's awesome, thank you so much. Christie, you're gonna do a great job. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tracy. Have a good evening. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Oh, there's a phone number.
Quick, get it off.
Quick before our text.
Let me see. Write that down.
All right, you gotta cut that out.
Blur the screen.
Christie, did you wanna just give us an update on the soccer season at all? I know we couldn't get kids here tonight, because we got basketball starting. Maybe you could also blend into how that's going, just in a nutshell. How's it going?
Yeah, nutshell, beautiful soccer season. It was great to be back on the field. We had good high energy. We had a lot of kids come out. It was a tough season, you know, with the big W's. But it was so rewarding to see how the kids came back. Every game, they tried their hardest, even if they played defense the whole game. They did not give up. And I think that energy came from top-down, from our coaches, really putting that positive energy out there and bringing that. So, yeah, I'm so happy. They seemed happy even after the losses. And now we're moving into our basketball season. We've got lots of activity there, a lot of boys trying out right now. We've got our girls team put together. And we have two community members coaching. So a little bit different than usual. Usually it's somebody in-house. So it's been kind of fun bringing the community in, in that way as well.
That's great.
Yeah.
Are you gonna have two boys teams, an A and a B team, or what was that?
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at, at all of that this week.
Because I think some other schools used to have A and B teams.
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of middle schools will have a seventh and an eighth-grade team.
Right.
We play seventh-grade schedule. So with that, I've talked to some other schools, and they have a lot of kids this year as well. So we have that opportunity, and we have a big number, which we do, to play a second game for, for an A and B team situation. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And then we have a lot of sixth graders who are interested. And there's also the rec department still encourages fifth and sixth to play together. So I think there'll be something for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good.
Keep them all engaged, so things are good.
And we have a new scoreboard we can use this year.
We do? I can't wait to learn how to use it.
Yeah, it's gonna be awesome.
And all the lights are gonna work, so we won't have to figure out if that's a three or an eight.
Depends on which way it works in our favor.
Which ones are burnt out, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions? Christie, no? All right, then, let's move on to number five, which is our consent agenda. And I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion with one change. Report out on the executive session should have said no action, because we did me.
No action, right, change that.
Otherwise, everything else is fine.
Yep. I'll second. It's been moved by Mary, seconded by CJ, to accept the consent agenda, just changing the no session to no action. Any discussion? All in favor? I have a no. So we'll move on now to chair reports, and we'll start with a superintendent's report.
Sure, I only have a few quick things. Uh, we're kind of moving into the holiday season with, you know, the, the month of November is a little bit shorter because we have some days off prior to Thanksgiving. We have the Wednesday before off. And then, of course, we have Veterans Day tomorrow. Uh, then once we get into December, you know, we're out, maybe the 22nd, I think, is our last day. So the months are a little bit shorter, and there's still a lot to do in the classrooms. But, so this holiday kind of spirit, as soon as we get out of Halloween, Trumpe Treat was awesome. As soon as we get out of that, we move right into like the Thanksgiving mode, and then, and then the Christmas mode. Christie did a good job with basketballs. Um, has started, they're here tonight. I've closed those doors and these doors. You'll see a lot of traffic in the building during our meetings. Our next meeting, our next month's meeting, will actually be in the cafeteria because Jen has the book fair here that same week. So we'll just meet in there and have our December meeting. And lastly, just PT conferences, parent-teacher conferences. Signups are available for, for the parents, and those are next Wednesday and Thursday of next week. And that's all I have for now.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions for, for John or anything they'd like to ask any other administrators about their reports that were in the package?
I think, uh, this technology report, where is it? Oh, there it is. Michael, um, yeah, so I didn't know if you wanted to tell us about that parent portal.
That's coming up, I think.
Yeah, he's on here.
Nine-one.
So this is not a good graph, right?
A hundred percent accurate. I got, I got, new data coming in.
And is anybody buying the old Chromebooks?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I bought four.
I will put a, um, a little clip in for during the teacher workshop days, I mean, the parent conferences, parent-teacher conference days, coming up on the.
Sixteenth, seventeenth.
Sixteenth and seventeenth of next, next, next week. I plan on having a tech yard sale in the front lobby with Chromebooks available to the public. The next week, Wednesday and Thursday, during teacher workshops, parent-teacher conferences, we'll be out there selling Chromebooks to the public at the communication doors.
Are they all the same price?
Yes, $20 apiece. They're all the same, makes and models.
Okay.
Any other questions for any of our? I noticed Kim has gone to a different format on her.
We have to, yeah, um, working with Bill Hall, to make sure we're in compliance with the way the state has. They've just changed a lot of their, how they want us to report things this September. And so like all our reserve accounts, they are now all in a separate fund, so they kind of all look like grants. So like, for example, the $100,000 that was just voted on by the town. So that one, that $100,000 was moved from our schools-on-assign fund balance, and it was transferred into our Fund 4,000, which is our capital improvements account. So that way, and we just did the purchase order for the lighting upgrade today. We dropped them in Jordan, so that's all ready to go. So, but the, the state is saying, when you have reserve accounts now, they all have to have certain categories, and they, they all have to have separate funds, just like we do with all our Title I, Title II, Title IV money. So that way, it stays separated. The other thing we had to pull out was, which we, I did at the end of last year, was the student activity accounts. So student council, student activity accounts, and all of our scholarship accounts, they all had to be in the Fund 2,000. So that was all uploaded into, so every, all our numbers are all under a ground chart now. But I thought, we've made the report so long, I thought, well, separate it out. I'll put my reserve funds under one, and then my, you know, just to make it a little easier to understand what you're looking at, so.
Well, we gotta keep up with the state requirements. Whatever they are.
Yeah.
Well, it does make it pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, it kind of like, like you said, if you just wanna look at your reserve accounts, all your reserves are all secret and one to report. If you just wanna look at student activities, those are all one to report. And then operating your own.
Anybody else have any questions for any of the administrators' reports?
Well, right now, it does look very nice for our number-two fuel oil to be at 3.84.
Whoa, no kidding?
I know.
That, they can come over and fill mine. I have like four tanks, and.
It took, it took us Sanford quite a bit, and it took, uh, a lot of time we got all the bids back. I, I was really starting to panic. We, our last, last little bid, they got it two days before we signed that contract.
That's right, so we had to pay the other price.
Four something, a gallon.
Well, thanks for working with them. I appreciate the price that you got.
Yeah.
I was not jealous at all when I saw that.
You don't buy as many gallons.
No. It was great to see, great.
And it's, I mean, that's just another advantage, too, of partnering, partnering with Sanford.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that puts the, the number of gallons up so much higher than. Much better.
Because we use, we combine with the town of Sanford, Sanford High School, Acton, and Acton. And that gives, you know, that puts our numbers of gallons up above that threshold that makes it so they can buy in bulk, so.
Right.
At a better price.
Excellent, that's very good. Yeah, thank you for that. All right, we'll go on then to, if we're all done with number six, we'll move on to number seven, which is progress monitoring. And we'll turn it over to Patty.
Okay, so the last time I did this, I focused on, on the diagnostic that we did. This is the latest we have gotten from our NWEA testing. And what I did was, I went in and found there was a, there's a new format that they're using to actually show, show what your, what your class does for scores. But the way they do it, it's not just a diagram, because on the right, it tells exactly how many kids in third grade are above the 80th percentile, and there are eight of them. So if you take a quick look down here, and you wanna look at who's below the 21st percentile, you have five kids in reading, you have six kids in math. So what this tells the teacher is who the focus is in that class. And then you can pinpoint and see where you really need to put, put your work. Because what you do after this is you just drill down even further, and you can find out what skills they're having a hard time in. So this is third grade in a nutshell. This is fourth grade. So they only have four kids, uh, two kids in reading and two kids in math who are below that 21st percentile. The rest of them are looking pretty even. And the last time, um, so if you look at the yellow, that's actually where it's average. And then everything above it is either high-average or exceeding. So if you focus on the numbers from the, the yellow line up, then you get a pretty good bead on who your kids are who are doing pretty well. And then you can focus on the lower two lines. And then you can focus on the lower two lines to really pick up where you need to work. And the thing is with, with the math piece, okay, so this is fifth grade reading, we have two fifth grades. With the reading piece, these guys are looking pretty good. They only have two kids in the lower two lines on each area. So fifth grade is looking pretty good in reading. And they're looking pretty good in math, too. And they can take this information and combine it, what they get, with what they get out of the diagnostic for the math and really hone in on what they need to do. So they're kind of, their math is a little bit, a little bit interesting to me. I missed, missed doing that. All right, this is sixth grade reading. And sixth grade has a few challenges in the bottom, two look, two rows. And so what I did today was I went online, I went on and emailed the teachers' lists of kids who are in, below the 20th percentile, so they know who their focus really needs to be for double dipping this year. This is their reading, this is their math. So I let their respective teachers know. This is seventh grade in a nutshell. Their math and reading were good. This is eighth grade in a nutshell. So, um, along with, you know, with the diagnostic from the iReady that we're using, there's a continuum that they can go into and find out exactly what skills kids are missing and where to target. So that, I thought, was the easiest way to look at our NWEA. And in response to Ray's comment earlier, there's a, there's a wealth of information now for teachers, now that we've done this, to drill down in and see, and then do a comparison. Because we have iReady reading through fifth grade and it's a pilot, so it's that trying time where we're just kind of checking it out and seeing, it's not costing us anything. And do we feel like it's going to be an effective program for us? And the iReady math that's in place, we can look at data from both to see what really needs to happen in order for our kids to, to start moving those scores.
Well, when was the test taken?
This was taken in September.
You see, so they just came off of, that's the thing.
Yes.
They just came off of vacation.
Right. And, and the diagnostic is actually going to happen next month. So we have another diagnostic. So I was talking to Ray and saying, I can't really follow a flow right now because last year was that first year that we had the iReady math piece like firmly in place. This year, we now have fall scores to look at. And then when December's diagnostics happen for both reading and math, we can do a comparison there. And that will, but there's so much information, I gave Ray some reading, there's so much information in the iReady that, that teachers can, can work with. We have the, the consultant coming again in January to check in on us, see what else can be done. And when they come, they come for the whole day. We have office hours with them, teachers can check in all day long. So, you know, so this is just like Mary said, this is our fall scores. We'll see news again in the spring, uh, winter.
We'll do winter and spring, right?
We'll do winter and then spring.
So I'm in charge of supervision and evaluation of the professional teaching staff and for the continuing contract teachers, many set up goals that have to do with a baseline NWEA data such as this in the, in the fall when kids are coming off summer break. So let's see what they remember, let's see where they are at this point in time as soon as possible when school open. And then they'll make some goals based on individual students or classrooms as to what that performance level should be in May or June. And then we sit down and we look at it. So our May-June scores, of course, we're always looking for growth. The trick is, students that are already performing very high have little growth to show versus students who are not progressing as well and then start progressing, their growth curve could be much steeper and accomplish much quicker. So it's a very tricky with educators to pick a cohort of kids that you want to find specific growth, but Patty's tools can drill down and actually, you know, identify what students are.
There's a really nice quadrant that all of the teachers can look at and you can change the values, and I've done that before. And you can look at someone who might have a high score but low growth. And that's what happens. When they get high enough, they don't have that prior knowledge to move much further because they're that high. Or they might have a low score, but they've grown a ton. So with the NWEA, there's a trajectory that they want these kids to hit the entire way up, you know, so teachers will then look at, did they meet it? What do we need to do to help them meet it? So.
And when the school committee may created cohorting and grade spans where kids could play up or down depending on their abilities, that was brilliant because we have some new students that came in and in some areas really tested a couple of grades higher than they really are compared to the peers. So the first question is, you know, which classroom shall they go to for their instruction? Because they're kind of playing at a higher grade level than moving, just moving to acting and coming in, these are new kids I'm speaking of. And then you have to ask the question socially, emotionally, is two grades really too much for a first grader to be in a third grade class? So what can we do? So we really look at the individual student and we look at the growth and look at the trajectory of where they're going. But we experienced that this year, but having those cohorts, having illiteracy and numeracy all at the same time in that cohort, it's not hard to cross the hall or go next door. It really works nicely.
The flexible grouping was happening.
Yeah.
Good. And I think what's awesome about this program, this program is that when you go in and look at a particular student, you don't only see that they're, you know, you can actually see what, what skills they really are missing. It's not just like, okay, we're, you're not doing well in math, well, why? And you can hone right in on what the skill is and maybe it's problem solving, maybe it's, you know, whatever, but you can zero in on what each individual kid needs. And I, I think that's, I think that's amazing to have a program that allows you to go in and pull out a student and say, okay, you know, we know you need a little extra work right here and, you know, to be able to actually hone in on, on what the skills are that they're missing, I think is...
And the iReady will actually group other kids who are in that, in that same skill set. So there's a lot, there, everything is all laid out so that before you even start a lesson, you can see where your kids are. And if they're ready and they've already got the skills, then you accelerate. If they're not, if they're just ready to learn, that's, then you know that they need just regular teaching. Some need a little extra support and some need some pre-teaching before they can actually be ready for that lesson. And it's all mapped out for your whole class.
Amazing.
Every lesson.
That's amazing.
You don't, yeah, it's all right there. So, and the math mirrors the reading, so it's super easy for teachers to make that transition, so. Yep.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I do, actually.
Yeah?
I saw that on, I'm focusing on, on the bottom two bars. It was the same number on basically about 80% that was coming up. Three students, math, three students. Is that the same student that is lacking in both areas or is it a different number of students?
Sometimes. Sometimes you'll have the same student who has that, that challenge in the reading and math. And the teachers can see that. But I've seen kids who, who excel at reading and are really kind of struggling in the math piece. So it, it's interesting because I, I've been through and when I went through the, the ones who are in the 20th percentile or lower, sometimes you see the kids, they'll fall in both. And they may have learning difficulties that prevent them from excelling in either one of those. And then I had one where one of my, one of my students that I've worked with before showed up needing help in the math, but she's really picked up on the reading. You know what I mean? So they don't always show up in both.
No.
It's very interesting to watch.
I guess the follow-up question on that is, not that any of us need to know, but would there be, is there a program in the school that may be dealing with issues that may be happening at home? RTI.
Yes.
Yeah, we do have an RTI. I'm on that team, too.
So response to intervention is something that's been in place in public schools since about 2011. And that's a step before looking at, does a student, say, have a learning disability? Well, just because a student might be struggling, any of those students that are in, that we were just talking about, doesn't mean they have a learning disability. It just may, may mean that we need to double up in our reading or our writing or our math. And the way we do that, Ray, is we have picture the pyramid, right? Half the pyramid deals with academic response intervention and the other side is behavioral. We have some students that do quite well academically but aren't really following our PBIS expectations. We have to put certain things in place. I'll give you an example, like a reminder before we go into class what the expectations are, just to remind, you know, Bobby that this is, and that, that might just be an intervention, doesn't provide a learning disability, but this person just might need to be reminded a little more and that's in their plan. Academically, we might double up our time on mathematics or have pull-out instruction with mathematics when, when you were doing the coaching and you're doing some of that now, Patty. Doesn't mean the student has a learning disability, it just shows that they're targeted as somebody who needs a little bit more than some of their peers. And that's called the response to intervention process and it's pretty robust. Patty's the chair of that committee. And we've had that in place here, many main schools have had that in place for about a decade. And if this doesn't work, if the response to intervention doesn't work, then we kind of look to Sharon in the special ed department and say, gee, we've been doing this for three, four months and we're not seeing the growth we expected. Maybe we'll make a special ed referral. But we never just go to a special education referral without trying some things on first to find out, is it just the way that we're teaching? Is it just the way they're learning? Or do they just need to sit up front? Is it as simple as having you sit up front because you can pay attention a little more than if you're back there with your friends? So that's what the RTI process offers us, is a chance to look at those kids in the lowest tier and what can we do as a school to support them? That explains why I would maybe sit up front. I would, you're twelve. And you know what? And you're sitting up front tonight, Ray, so.
Right, the front row. We also have the, um, the reading pullouts, too. We have the Title I.
Oh, Title I, thank you. I didn't even look at that.
Title I reading where kids are pulled out and work with a Title I reading teacher, which, where they get special help on that.
What about students that are on medication? How is that, I mean, reflecting on the scores and stuff, I mean, would, would that, would there be a reflection? More in behavior, you can see it more. Not necessarily, well, ADHD or... Right. Somebody might be pretty high energy one day and maybe a little, might present a little different the next day and the nurse might call home and say, how are we doing with, with the meds for the parents? Of course, that's a very, you know, a quiet conversation between the nurse and the parent. You ask an interesting question with medication and testing and assessments and, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Sharon, but that's my, may, may fall a little more on you. I really don't know much about medication and how somebody performs academically versus behaviorally. I know quite a bit about that.
If medication is working, then it's, you know, you should see no difference in that student related to their typically developing peers. So if you have a student here who's on medication and a student here who's not, and if it's working, you shouldn't see a difference.
Great.
It should, it should help them access the curriculum just as easily as the student who's not on medication. But if the medication isn't working, obviously, it's going to impact negatively on them. And there are some parents who, who don't agree with medication and that's fine, too. But it's our responsibility to make sure that the environment is adapted for them so that they're able to access their education as easily as a student that doesn't have those issues. So, so I would say, yes, it can impact, but on the other hand, you know, if it's working, I would say it shouldn't.
So do, do teachers make recommendations to parents on students with behavioral issues that perhaps they should be looking at some medical aspect of it?
No, that's not, we're not doctors.
Yeah. I wanted to know that.
But we do, we do have evaluations done by a school psychologist. She is, she's a consulting psychologist that we contract with and she's a, she's a doctorate level. And she sometimes will meet with parents and, and offer that suggestion. She can do that because she's a medical service provider, you know, I'm not.
Right.
And so she may suggest that to a parent and a parent can always say, thank you very much, but I'm not doing that. And that's fine, you know? But some parents will say, oh, you know, I never thought of that. Maybe I should go to my pediatrician and see what we can do. So, yeah, so she, she is kind of that person that does that for us, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sharon. Good answer.
Okay, then, we're ready to move on to number eight, which is committee reports.
Let the policy committee speak, because I couldn't be there, I was at a workshop on Monday and I think it was Kim and, it was Kim and CJ, right?
Just, yeah, just us.
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll actually let Kim handle this because it's just two policies and they're both brand new and they both have to do with nutrition.
So basically, Holly is being audited this year through the state. And, um, you know, when they come in and they review everything, one of the things they look at is policies. And these are two new policies that we don't have on the books and it encourages like federal funding. So now with nutrition, we've got federal funding for revenue and we've got a state funding for revenue. So basically, all of our nutrition is covered. And so this is to make sure we have the federal side policies. So that's what we do on. One is a code of conduct procedure, so how you handle it. And then the other one is a procurement procedure. So this is for, and this was what Holly does, this is why we hire Holly to do this, because we, again, combine with Sanford to buy our food, to buy all the non-food items, you know, whether it's through Sishtal, whether it's through W. D. Mason, or whether it's through Performance and all those. So they, they basically, you know, this is like thinking straight, follow contract and then it's just, it's really standard operating procedure again in writing under, with a federal title for them.
If I could just add too for the committee and the audience, an audit doesn't mean that something happened and somebody came to audit us. This is very similar to a special ed audit that might happen every five years. It could be a desk audit or it could be a full common visitation. And this just happened to come up that it's our turn to be looked at and as a result of that, that's why we have to invoke these policies. Yeah.
So then, anybody got any other questions about these?
Just on the EFC-r, are you going to put the food service phone number there or you don't have to?
I don't, so the only...
It just says XXX.
I think it's always they have their normal number here because it would be Holly's cell phone number and I didn't want to put Holly's cell phone number.
No, she must have a number.
She probably has an extension here, right?
No.
She doesn't have an extension.
She must, she must. Then I would put Sanford's phone number.
I have that on.
She might not be here next year, you know, I mean, why would you put a phone number?
No, not hers.
She does have a Sanford number. I mean, I, I left, yeah, I think I Xed it out because I hadn't had a chance to talk to her yet on what she wanted me to use for contact.
Well, this is a first read, so you can always fill that in.
Well, we had an old one that, but...
Does the policy require the contact number to be in it? Or is it in our form? I'm just curious.
That's the R.
Usually in policy, you're not naming people or phone numbers.
Right.
It's interesting. We can put our school number on it and that would probably cover it.
Well, that's what I had. I had so purchasing contracts, so under the, the procedure, because it's just a procedure, it says, if you have questions or concerns regarding the procurement, solicitations.
Solicitations.
Contract evaluations and award contract. It gives, it gives, I put in the central office number, really, and then it had director of food service, but again, it's a Sanford number. And I, I almost was like, man, it probably...
I would almost leave that off.
Put a number again.
Leave this, leave our school number on there.
People change, numbers change.
That's what I mean, it's like we have one of our own.
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
I mean, I don't want them to call Sanford and they start giving them Sanford's information, right?
I know, but I would rather that be Corstoa.
Yeah.
Or just, just put our, just put the same number, the actual number down.
That's all, that's all that's necessary.
Because if it really is anything directed towards Holly, you can pass the message on, kind of thing.
Right.
It just looks silly having XXX.
I know, while I was kind of like, oh, I don't want to do that.
So, so do we want to cross that off or do we want to put it down twice? I think just crossing it off would be the best.
Yeah.
Just leave it off. Just leave it off.
Leave it off.
Yeah. That's not necessary.
And like you said, this is just a first read, so we'll see it again next time.
Yeah. And if Holly says no, you have to have the food director number, then we'll have.
And I will ask her that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then, I will look for a motion to accept policies EFC and EFCR for a first reading.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any more?
Oh, actually, I found a, is this a typo? On that part that you just, that line that you just read, above the phone numbers, contract evaluations, and award, should that say contact instead of contract again?
Oh, yeah.
Award contact.
I missed it on my phone, but I caught it there.
Oh, you know what? It's, it's an and award contract.
Oh, okay. So, it's the comma.
But it's a purchasing contract, purchasing, yeah, questions and concerns.
Maybe you don't, maybe you don't need a comma after award.
No, we don't need a comma after award.
I don't even know what's in English.
But that could be contract, then, right?
It could be contract, or it could be an award.
It's an award.
An award contract.
Okay.
Contract, you evaluate the contracts, and then you award them, correct?
Award contract.
Yeah. So, take out the comma and, yeah.
Why on earth would I know that?
Okay. Okay? I'll step for the first reading.
Yes.
All those in favor? All right. All right, we'll move on to long range.
We did meet, and I'll let Amanda talk.
Actually, Andy's got a good update about our lights, that the vote passed on. We talked about that.
So, the vote passed on Tuesday. And with that, we're going to be moving ahead with the LED light fixtures throughout the school. Talked to John first thing on Tuesday mo, uh, Wednesday morning, rather. Once we realize the vote had passed, and we're going to be able to move forward. Been in contact with the contractor that's going to be doing the work, and I feel really good about the fact that things are going to move right along pretty quickly, now that they have, you know, they actually contacted us before we had got a chance to contact them, because they, they had the date already, and they knew that it was going to be decided that day. So, with that, I spoke with a gentleman from Johnson and Jordan. Kim prepared the purchase order today, and we got that over to them. And I'll be working with them next week. They're going to come in and do a walkthrough to create a schedule, and we'll be moving forward pretty, pretty quickly. So.
That's great.
Thank the public for supporting the, the school and the project.
Absolutely.
Thank John. John did a lot of the work through Efficiency Main to make this happen, and it's going to be a fantastic project for the school. It's going to benefit the school financially, and, you know, the, the environment itself. So, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty pleased that the community supported it, and look forward to having the project done.
It's the process of putting this out to the selectmen, warrant, finance, and then the public, through the form, it was awesome. It was a great experience for both Andy and I. I want to thank everybody who supported this, because my only concern, and is completely relieved, first is, are we going to get it passed overwhelmingly passed in the community, which was great? And the fact that the vendor had emailed us before I had even sent the results to Andy, and that was at, like, 4:00 in the morning, and when I got here, the gentleman was saying, did it, you know, are you guys ready for us? And I was like, wow, they're right on top of it. And then, no less than 12 emails have gone back and forth that have been part of in the last day. So, as always, Andy's right on top of everything. We have to have it done by February 17th. There's plenty of time there, now that we know that we have the supplies and everybody's on board. So, that window seemed short when we first talked about this to get it done, but, you know, pending that they come in and get going, like, I know they're going to, and Andy will be right on top of it, as he always is, we'll be fine.
So, getting the, getting the products that they need is not a problem now, then?
They already have.
No, it's actually like a team of five people from Johnson and Jordan that are all working collaboratively on the project. So, the gentleman that I spoke with today, and have emailed back and forth with, he's like, he's the man that's overseeing the whole project. And he'll work with the installer, the electrician team, as well as the vendor. So, this email that John referenced, I mean, when he sent an email, it's going out to all the, all the players involved in this. So, it's, like I said, I was very, very pleased with how quickly they responded to us, and would have been very pleased with the, with the conversations that have gone back and forth.
I think when we asked initially, I was concerned about, like, the product supply, you know?
You do, you are.
But there, they said that wasn't a problem. That wasn't an issue, having the product.
They wanted to make sure we had space to hold on to, you know, to, if we order these pieces and they come in, do you have a place to put them? So, we've already, we've decided what we're going to do about that, but that, so that's telling us, it's not going to be shipped, unless it's a shipping error, if somebody has it somewhere, and they want to get it to us.
Now, how far away are these people that are supposed to come and install here?
No, they're low.
Well, there's five people. So, there's one gentleman that's actually the distributor that lives up in Bangor.
He's in Bangor, yeah.
But he travels all over the state. Johnson and Jordan is based out of Scarborough. And Steve Adams, who actually is one of the top guys at Johnson and Jordan, he lives up in the Freeport area, I believe. He was the one that realized the Efficiency Main rebates and everything applied to our facility. So, he's on the team, too. So, it's quite a wide range. I mean, Johnson and Jordan is a, is a pretty good-sized company that, that.
I see their trucks all the time.
I see them all the time, too, all over the state. It's great.
So, yeah.
I kind of just wonder where the workers come from, you know? I mean.
Well, why don't you come here, introduce yourself, check it out.
Say, excuse me. Do you, do you have a car?
Well, you know, if they're living up in Holton, you know, how long's it going to take them to get here to work?
Put them up in the hotel.
Some of the guys travel there.
I know, yeah.
A range for working. One of the guys that did the boiler, he lives in Rangeley, drove down from Rangeley every day.
Oh, jeez.
So. And he's like, uh, acting, that's not a bad drive. I'm like, well, how far do you go? Go wherever they need heat, so. Yeah.
Anyway, for the long-range planning, we did go over the different items that we are looking at, that are going to be, like, for the next three, four, five years. However, we, it's just a draft, so, in our December meeting, we'll have it more down. And also, some of the numbers were old, and we know prices have skyrocketed, skyrocketed, such as for roofing material. So, we're going to relook at the pricing, and then put it down in our nice little chart. That's it.
On behalf of the board, I think we'd like, all like to thank the community, too, for supporting the transfer, so that we can move forward with this. This is a great, this is a great project, and it's, it's going to save money on electricity down the road. We're going to save there, plus, we're going to get a nice, healthy rebate back as well. So, and thank you, John, and Andy, and all of the Jordan boys, whoever they are, wherever they come from. We're ready for you to come and do it. Let's move on now to number nine. And we'll turn it over to Mike with Brightspace.
Do you need this? Okay, I'm over.
I know. It's just more than funny.
Yes.
So, a couple years ago, the Learning Management Committee, Learning Management Assistant Committee got gathered, and we picked the product Brightspace as our next learning management system to deploy our grading and student progress through. One of the key features of, and aspects of Brightspace is, in our, in our, what we're looking for, is something to help communication with parents, especially between teachers, students, and parents. So, when we initiated, initially deployed Brightspace, our target and focus was on students and teacher communication, because we hadn't ironed out all the glitches and bugs, and we hadn't got enough content into the system for really parent consumption. So, we, we opened the door to the parents through the students. So, we had the students walk the parents through their piece of the portal, their piece of the interface. And as we did that, and over the time, we discovered that doing that with the parents was not very efficient, effective, and efficient, and kind of glitchy. So, since then, we have opened the door to the parent portal. And the data I'm going to show you is the growth of parent access directly through the Starting in September, we had 10 parents out of 220 access the parent portal directly. And as, I don't know if you can see the numbers clearly, but.
Yeah.
In October, we had 12 additional parents log in. And now, we are early in November, and we've already had 17 additional parents log in. And I'm hoping this, this blue bar grows, because every 30 days, I've initiated a timed program to say, hey, parents, you haven't accessed your student's portal in 30 days. Come and check it out. So, hopefully, that will open the doorway for parents to have a more transparent window into their students' learning. So, hopefully, that blue bar will grow next month. I mean, we're early on in November, and we've already had 17 additional parents since October. So, my hope is, in 30 days, that will be exponentially larger than.
But like I asked you earlier, you said that a lot of the parents might be just looking under their child's name, so they aren't reflected here.
So, we, Patty had handed out to all teachers instructions that had access to the parent portal. So, hopefully, I'm hoping that the teachers handed those out to the students lap at the beginning of this week.
Yeah.
And they made access to that. They walked through the process, and they got in. If not, I've automated a system that will say every week, if you haven't accessed in 30 days, here's an email to, with instructions on it, and if you have any questions, just email me back.
So, hopefully, you'll see a big jump in numbers from that information going home again.
Weekly, weekly, every, you know, an email will go out to parents.
So, maybe the parent-teacher conference.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
And through advertising, too, an opportunity for teachers to put a plug-in for the parent portal, and, and having direct access to the student's learning.
Yeah, because the papers that came home looked very, very similar to the ones that we got at Open House. So, for someone who didn't really look at it too quickly, they're like, I got this already. So, it might be beneficial to have the teachers tell the parents at the parent-teacher conference, hey, this is different.
It is different. It's a different.
Down with this other one.
And it.
Like, just make it very clear, because.
It is very similar. The look is very similar, but it is a different process.
And it's a lot nicer to work with.
Yeah.
As a parent than the, than the student access.
Yeah, but it was concerning you don't have as much information at your fingertips, but you can dig in. You can go deeper and deeper into your students' learning, and get the granular level of information on the assignments, comments from the teacher. You can, you can go that far, as long as you just keep digging into.
Can you tell which grade level the parents are going in at? More of the eighth graders versus a younger grade? Or how does that work?
That's a good question. I didn't, I didn't drill that information out.
No, I'm just curious.
But the, the, I can potentially pull that data. The challenge is, is a lot of times.
You might have two or three kids.
One parent is accessing multiple students, right? So, which student is it?
Yes, yes.
So, and the majority of, a lot of parents is, have siblings, you know, have siblings here. So, it's going to be a challenge to find that granular data information, but I can potentially pull that up for the next meeting to see what grade levels are being, being accessed more often.
One of the goals we set in the July workshop was Brightspace, and one of the pieces was parent access. Does this kind of information help you?
Yeah.
Because we really didn't talk a lot about going into this, because we weren't exactly sure what you wanted to see. But if something like this is helpful, then monthly or bimonthly, you can decide what you want for information.
As long as he puts it in his report.
Yeah.
We don't have to present it.
Right. He puts it in his report, and, you know, and I think the thing of it was, at our, when we were setting our goals, was that we knew it was a new program, and it was just getting started, and there were a lot of steps to go through. And that was before we'd even had the Open House and all that stuff. So, yeah, this is, this is good to, good to know, and good to see.
Maybe after conferences, if you hear any feedback from parents saying, this is working good, or this, you know, that would be nice to hear, too.
Take a minute to celebrate Gags birthday. They did this at lunch, too. The whole school heard of that.
He's popular.
Yeah, he's going to go help us with that.
That's all right. They're going to go and call me.
Yes, but it's not school time.
Good question.
Yes, I can move. Mike, do you have another slide? We did.
That's it.
Okay.
For Brightspace, you're, you're seeing an increase in parent logging into the parent With that whole aspect, and you're talking about drilling down, drilling down, depending on how far the parent wants to go. Is, is there any kind of workshop that would show the parents that are interested of how deep, how deep they can go into this? Or is it just something that, well, we'll put it out there, and the parents can find out one way or another? That would be my question.
Let me try to answer your question with a broad, a couple of points that I wanted to bring up about Brightspace when Mike was done. And if I don't answer it, we can revisit with people that know more about Brightspace than me. First of all, this has been a huge process. I have to put an H on that. It's huge. It started a couple years ago, and it's one thing to shop for a learning management system. It's another one to learn it and implement it. So, when you're shopping, there's not a lot of pressure. It's, oh, this looks good. It's kind of like looking for a car, you know? But then, when it comes down to, now I got to, I guess, probably, what Brightspace shopping is, is like, when you have to start figuring how you go pay for your car, that's what implementation is to a learning management system. People start, really starting to sweat and figure this out, and not going to make it work. Then, the other huge pieces, we're now moving into our first grading quarter, which is coming up in the next couple of weeks after parent-teacher conferences, where this thing is supposed to work, and be able to tell you something about your students' progress in a world where the learning management system reports in real-time how your children are doing. But we also understand that people want report cards. It's a tradition, and it makes sense, and I agree, we want report cards. To make the world of report cards work with Brightspace is an incredibly technical process that you have to trial-balloon a lot of things. And I want to give my highest compliment to the teachers in this school for hanging in there with us, because I've seen smiles, I've seen laughs, and I've seen tears, and I've seen some anger. And that's all part of the process. I tried to say this two years ago, like, hey, organizational change is hard, and it's messy. And they're like, yeah, we're shopping, go away. Now, we're living it. Now we're living it and I don't want to say told you because that's not how I operate, but I knew this was coming and I knew it would happen. Nothing, it's like making sausage, nothing ever really looks very good, but then when you go to eat it, it works fine. And that's what we're going through right now. I've been through this, I'm older than I look, I know, but I've been through this before and I know what this looks like. A lot of people haven't and they get very frustrated because they want everything to work just right and it's not going to work just right. It's working great because the teacher's been pulling on the rope really hard and doing things over again and over again and over again because we didn't get it right. So they're exhausted, we're all, but it's, but I'm going to tell you, it's on the W side, it's not on the L side of the scoreboard, but it's been hard work and, and I wanted to just say that because it is and you don't see it. You don't see what has to happen to kind of come up with this thing that they're going to put on their refrigerator at the end of the day, so I tip my hat to the staff for hanging in there, okay? That's number one. Number two, Mike and Patty have been unbelievable. This started with Lori and Mike and then Lori moved on and Patty's picked this up and Brightspace wasn't something that we really talked about and this is what she's been doing and Patty's had to put some other things over here to get this done to work with Mike and Mike's had to put a lot of things over there to work with Brightspace and they've been doing great and we will get this done and we'll get to where we need to be. But it's your biggest comprehensive change that's been in this building since I've been here and I could, I knew it two years ago, here we go, unless we stay with Mastery Connect, this is going to be a big change and it is, so we're living it now. So the good thing is, once we're able to figure out report cards, trimester two and three should be a little more muscle memory. It's the first one you do that's the hardest one. Remember your first kid? There you go. So, so that's kind of, that's kind of how this is playing out right now live. Now, a couple of good things that are also happening. We have connected with a school that's been doing this for two years, who has a very articulate person who knows both sides, the technical piece that Mike's dealing with and the delivery to the adults that Patty's been kind of dealing with in a teacher way in a teacher's mind, the way they want to do things. Because the last thing a teacher wants to do is jump out of a plane and then say, knit the parachute on the way down. Teachers want to plan out everything and this is a process, so we can't do it and there's been some places where we could have probably done better to help the teachers, I'll admit that. So we met a technical expert that can help us. And conversely, Jennifer's going to be working on a course that will help her and help us understand as we get grading down and Brightspace has its own like little professional development courses and certificates. That's not really the technical side of it, that's what falls on Mike and a person that's done this before for two years in another school district, but once we can get over the grading piece and take a breath and come up with some air, there's the bells and whistles of Brightspace, so when the parent, to answer your question, I finally got to it, I'm hoping that within this course is if a parent needs some adult education, that there might be some things that Jennifer could offer as well. So this is comprehensive, we have the technical side, what happens behind the computer screen that nobody cares about, I just want it to work. And then you have the adult education side where we have to work with teachers and parents for them to understand how to find what it is they want to find depending on what it is they're looking for. So it's coming together and will everything work smoothly? No. Will it work? Absolutely. And we're going to do it because the teachers are going to make it happen and they've been doing a heck of a job with this, so. If I didn't take the opportunity tonight, have this little Brightspace thing, I'd be remiss in not saying something, so.
That's great.
Yeah, not easy, but mission, mission will be accomplished, that's part of the deal. There's no turning back, so, okay.
And the end result is fantastic because you have so much information that you can access, you know?
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Now we'll ask you about the budget.
Yeah, that one's mine, it's just more of an infomercial on the FY '24 budget coming up. I've always felt as though we get to March-ish, second, third week, we don't, even if we don't get snowed out of a warrant finance meeting, sometimes we have to cancel, we didn't at all last year. And it seems as though, it feels a little tight to make sure that we get everything done and to the selectmen to sign on time so that we can get to a vote sometime in April. And it's almost like if we missed a meeting or two, we don't have a lot of buffer time there. And I'm not being specific because I don't have last year's dates. Talked to Kim a little bit, I want to, I want to get on this a little bit earlier to give us a little more time if we do have to cancel a meeting or more time for people to look at some information to get, I know there's that, that date where things need to be to the selectmen to be signed to say this is our budget to go to the voters. Those timelines that Jennifer Rue and I work with are tight, always, they're always tight.
March, it's horrible, yeah.
Yeah, but we want to have that April vote to get out front for hiring and other reasons. So saying that, working with Kim, I want to try to get the teacher stuff done sooner and maybe start our first warrant and finance meeting on the budget. I'll look at the schedule with Kim and maybe start a week or two earlier than we have traditionally. What we usually do is we open up last year's book, the calendars changed today and we kind of follow that pattern through to get to where we need to be. I might suggest we either start a little earlier or we take a little more on when we do meet for articles and not stretch it out and have more time to refine or revise so that when we do get to the selectmen piece of it and warrant finance needs to sign off on it, we have enough time and not feel like, oh boy, I hope it doesn't snow Thursday night. Because it literally came down to, I hope it doesn't snow Thursday night to get this done and I think starting sooner would just kind of buffer that a little bit.
Yeah.